BTWP Wi-Fi, do you see that? BTWP, Bruce Township Wi-Fi.
Yeah.
I don't know the password or anything, so someone else would have to provide that.
Randy, do you have it? I know that, did Kristen get that?
I don't think they sent it to me. Let me see what.
Password for the Internet?
Yes, Bruce Township rocks, but it's symbols and stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead. Susan's ready to go whenever you are.
Would she know what you're looking for?
Are we ready?
We are ready. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bruce Township Planning Commission meeting of May 4th, starting a few minutes after our normal start time for some technical issues. Dana, will you please call roll?
Jared Vinson?
Here.
Ed Cupids?
Here.
Rick Hagelstein?
Here.
Randy Cant?
Here.
Connie Schattman?
Here.
Mandy Barnett?
Here.
Mike Tremblay?
Here.
Quorum. You all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we went through the roll call, you may have recognized the new name, Randy Cant. At my far right is the new Planning Commissioner for Bruce Township. This is his first meeting, and I've known him for a while. He and I talked quite a bit about the Planning Commission whenever we got his application. He should be a good add to this group. Okay. Item number four is the approval of the minutes. Anyone have any changes?
I have a suggestion on correcting some formatting on page two. At the top where it says "Public Hearings" in bold, I would suggest that we, in front of that or above that, that we label what that public hearing was about. And it was the height limits and parking requirements for industrial buildings, I believe.
Yes.
So that it's clear that that public hearing was related to that. That's it, me.
Okay, with that change, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of May 4th with the change that has been recommended.
Second.
Motion by Cupids, seconded by Tremblay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Proposed? None. Motion carries. Okay, we have the usual items in the agenda. Some of them have no business associated with it, but they're listed in our agenda anyway. So, question to the commission. Anyone wish to make a change to the agenda as it was shown throughout?
Yes, we're supposed to have two different items on the agenda tonight. Got an email from the supervisor. We're going to talk about Lavender Farm and what else.
Bankruptcy.
Bankruptcy.
The banquet facility is on here, the Lavender Farm is not.
Okay, do we need to add that?
Probably should.
To the agenda?
Probably.
Wherever. Okay.
You want to make that motion?
I make a motion to add Lavender Farm to the agenda, 10G.
Anyone have any other changes? If that motion has been made by Connie Schattman, I'll second that to adjust the agenda to make Lavender Farm item 10G. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed? Nay. Motion carries. Okay, we reached item number six, and that's our public comment section. Anyone that wants to approach the microphone and speak on any issue associated with planning. You have about three minutes typically to bring up your item and discuss it. So if anyone wishes to do that now, we just ask that you approach the microphone, give us your name and address, and let us know what's on your mind. Okay, see no one heading to the microphone, we'll move on. See?
Question, question.
Go ahead.
When we get to some of the items under 10, are you going to maybe open that up or not?
Open what?
Open for public to comment.
Oh.
You might want to clarify that for the public.
I was going to do it later, but I will. Okay, so we have made arrangements and discussion for ourselves, and Joe will clarify it in a little while. But there will be opportunity for the petitioner to speak and folks in the audience to speak as well.
On item 10A.
That's on 10A, yes. Okay, so technically, we have no public hearings, and we also this evening have no reviews. So that is items seven and eight on our agenda. We're just going to go on to item nine, which would be communications from commissioners on any topics.
Yeah, I'll just bring the commissioners up to speed as to some things that we recommended to the board and the action that the board took. One was a Touche accessory building. The board approved that at 1,200 square feet. He brought his square footage down. He was at the limit for a parcel of 1.5 acres. His actual acreage was 1.43. Given the immaterial amount of the difference, I recommended that the board approve his accessory building, and it was approved by the board. We had discussed it here. Our recommendation was to deny. But with the changes that the applicant made, I thought it was fair to approve.
Excuse me, Mike, point of correction, that was not Touche. That was the one at, was it Pond Creek?
Salva. Pond Creek, Salva.
What was the applicant's name, Dana?
The builder, he was a builder, Salva.
Salva, that's it.
Okay. I stand corrected, thank you.
You bet.
The other matter that was related to Planning Commission is we had made a recommendation to make some changes to our height and our parking requirements in the industrial district, and those recommendations were approved by the board. And then the PC goals were presented to the board and they accepted them. And then I have a question for Dana. The Planning Commission goals, can we get a clean copy with all the red lines out?
There should be a clean copy in your packet.
There is.
Did everyone get that?
I'm sorry, do you?
There were two copies, one was the red line and one was the clean. But if you don't have that.
For this month?
I don't recall getting that.
Yeah, I don't either.
I think it was in last month's packet. Either way, I'll make sure.
If you could just, even if it's just an email to all the commissioners.
Hello? Want me, you want to know why I'm up here?
Yeah.
Okay. I missed the public comment, I was outside.
I'm sorry.
I missed the public comment, the ability to speak publicly.
You'll be able to speak on item 10G. It's called Lavender Farm.
Hi, Mike.
How you doing, Nick?
Good, it's been a while since I've seen you.
Yeah.
You remember me?
I reckon, I remember.
Yeah, yeah, we had a lot of conversations about what to do, and it turned out to be a Lavender Farm. It's not bad, huh? This is all the other crazy ideas?
We'll be able to pick that up in a little bit.
So, 10G?
10G.
And I can speak and help clarify some things?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dana.
You know, I don't recall getting that cleaned up version, because after our last meeting, you made some comments and whatever. I don't recall getting that.
Yeah, there were a couple more deletions that had to be made. But I just think everybody should have a clean one.
Right.
Yeah.
Dana, you'll be able to provide that?
Yes, absolutely. It exists, it's, oh, it was in last month's. The April 6th packet.
Oh, the April packet?
Mm-hmm. But I'll.
We had to.
We made corrections that night though, because we said get rid of the sidewalk at Shayna's, and then Mike made two more corrections after that. So.
Dana, I have one that has what should be out if you need it after the meeting.
I'll look at it.
But mine's just. I see I scratched stuff off that was already done. Okay.
I know I've done it.
Okay.
I'll get.
I'll get it to you after the meeting.
Okay, now we're going to go to item 10A, which is discussion about 156 gates. This item on the agenda, most probably remember, was on our March 2nd meeting of this year. We held a public hearing, got input from both the petitioner and interested individuals. Planning Commission closed the public hearing and had discussion, and then made a recommendation to the township board to deny the request. At the board meeting, new facts were presented by the petitioner. Discussion at the board meeting resulted in it coming back to the Planning Commission for us to take another look at it based upon the new information. Joe, typically, you and I have talked about this. This type of request requires a public hearing, but it's coming back, which is unusual. And the notification to the public typically is done through the newspaper. Obviously, it was communication, because there's a lot of people here. And that, the purpose of that with the paper is to encourage public participation and get as much input as we can. Since returning to the Planning Commission is rare, Joe and I have discussed the proper way to handle this request coming back to the commission. So Joe, can you just make comments and summarize what we talked about and the conclusion?
Sure, at this point, the hearing's been held. But given that it's been returned to the Planning Commission and there's new information involved, there's not a statutory requirement to hold another public hearing or to post notice again. But the township felt it was best to behave as though there was. So a courtesy notice was published in the paper, and Dana, they were sent to the original group?
Yes.
Yes, of recipients. And it's, the Chair of the Planning Commission always has discretion to allow the public to comment on any issue, and you could exercise that discretion tonight to allow members of the public to respond to the new information that's been presented.
And so I had other conversation with the members of the commission we are going to do to allow folks to talk. Give us all the input we can. Commissioners, any questions regarding what Joe and I just talked about? Okay, with that, we will, I guess, turn it over to the petitioner to tell us the new information that you presented to the board, and we'll go on from there.
So at the last Planning Commission, prior to the denial, Tom Sirkoff had submitted a document that outlined that the properties presented on the current zoning map were not conforming to that labeling of R1B. So in some of the discussions in the Planning Commission early on, many people were commenting about zoning from one to two jumps per zoning. Well, if you look at the, you know, when we heard those comments, we wanted to address that, because when you look at all the adjacent properties of this last parcel between Cading Street, Van Dyke, and Gate Street, the parcels that are but Mr. Sirkoff's property don't conform to any R1B. They don't, many of them don't even conform to R1C. So because many of these homes were built maybe 80 to 100 years ago, at some point, the zoning never included a label of R1B. So I don't know when that changed, and when it did, someone incorrectly labeled the existing use that wasn't really representative of what's there. So in discussions, whether it's the public or the commission, you know, everyone assumes that what's labeled is true. So I think some of the decision-making or reasoning behind some of the decisions that everyone had made was based on information that wasn't really represented on the current conditions that exist. So we wanted to present that to the board, that we felt that our request is still valid. Our request is based on the existing surrounding, based on what your ordinances say. To match, as one of the items for considering a rezoning, is to look at the existing surrounding conditions to try to match the best to that. And we felt that what we see out there is somewhat of sub-R1C. There's RM1 existing. And we felt that because of the original studies of the existing rezoning of Deer Park and the stubs of the utilities that came to this property, we felt that this property was originally meant for a Phase 2 for Deer Park. Whether that happened because of economic conditions or an argument between the developer and the landholder at the time, they were stubbed to the property, but nobody developed it. Typically, in some of the other rezonings that we request in other communities, the people that are adjacent to those properties we rezone, that we affect, are usually given the same right. They're going to accept zoning changes to do the same. So to an extreme, if I was to paint a better picture, if I'm going to put a factory or an industrial building next to my house, because that is the future master plan, then that person with that home would have the same right to put an industrial building, because we're going to affect his property values, either to a positive or negative. I think our condition almost is the same, because if we look at any of the zonings in the township or any of the consent judgments, we feel that we're probably the least intrusive to our request of what we're asking, especially with what is around us. So we're asking, you know, the township to reconsider our request. We think that condominium project Senior Plus is the least intrusive. We feel that it's an extension of Deer Park, so it would be the same conditions. In terms of resolving some of the requests or concerns of the public, we went item by item to address those. Most of them are exactly the same, whether we have residential houses, whether we have condominiums with subsoils, water conditions, it's all the same. So realistically, this is a rezoning meeting, and we want to keep it to that pattern of what we see out there. So asking for the condominium project and addressing every one of the concerns, we felt that it's a valid request. And we're open to as many comments. We don't want to harm anybody, we don't want to hurt anybody's values. We want to bring a good project to the township. And we felt that it may even help the township in other future petitioners that would probably want to try to ask for additional zoning. You can say, no, we kept it to the south where sewer and water is. That zoned area seems to have already a pattern, so it made sense. It's the last piece between that, this area that is left that's large enough to even accommodate us. So I believe that it's a great argument even for the Planning Commission to make to future participants that would like, you know, additional multifamily zoning in the future. Because it can look like you've already accommodated some of that already. You know, where some, you know, opposition will always say, well, you're not doing enough for the township. Well, no, we've included some. So I think this is a great, you know, position for that. It makes sense. So we're open to your questions, to the participants, the public tonight. And hopefully, we can answer all the right questions and come to some, you know, fair conclusion.
I would open up to the public.
Any questions from the commissioners before we go to the public?
I'd like to make a comment. The surrounding properties do not comply with regulations. There's seven or eight examples here of houses on Cading and Gates and whatever. They were built, the first one, 1954, Cading. Cading, 1941. Gate Street, it was built in 1876. The other one, 1957, that's the newest. On Van Dyke, this one, maybe 1970. The Bruce Township Planning Commission was not created until 1969. So if these buildings do not comply, they had to zone them something, but when they're built in the 1800s, I mean, you have to understand.
Absolutely.
So.
Yeah, our comment is not to challenge what's here, it is what's here.
Yeah.
But at one point, when Planning Commission or the form of the charter is created, if you look in history, I was reading some of the older zonings from 30, 40 years ago, they would use our 20s, our 30s, our 40s. When they got away from that, for whatever reason, and they went to the letters of R1A, R1B, R... Someone has to look at existing, because when you're planning the township for future land use, you try to accommodate what's existing, because you can't change what's there already.
Right.
And our argument is just that we think that someone got it wrong, because we don't have any representation in terms of lot size. Even if the house was not even there, there's still, they platted lot. And they don't conform to the current requirements of lot width or lot size of 20,000 square.
But when they're built in the 1800s, that's probably the reason why. So I don't think that's fair to say they don't.
Just the lot size.
It's not fair to say they don't comply when they were built in the 1800s.
No, I'm talking about the lot, I'm not talking about the house. Let's say that there's an empty lot. So if someone tore down the house today, still, the lot doesn't conform to allow an R1B. So what I'm saying is that, and Joe can make some comments to this, but if Joe was hired to come into the township and create a zoning use map, which tells the picture of what's here, he would look at what's there, and then he would label it accordingly. That's not what happened. They got it quite wrong. So when you're looking at my presentation and you're being told that I'm looking for two zoning jumps, that's totally unfair and incorrect, because it's a misrepresentation of what's existing. Well, we like to build what the surrounding is for a couple reasons. One, we're not the banks, but anybody who's going to buy my product has to go through an appraisal. Everyone knows that. If the appraisal doesn't match because of what's there, then I can't put a million dollar house next to a $200,000 house, because the appraisals, you know, use existing. So the reason why we try to accommodate existing is so that it fits in, so an appraisal can make accommodations or what they call adjustments that get them there to be allowable to finance. Because if I build something in R1B right now, they won't have any support to give me that appraisal. So it's a lot of things that come into play, and I'm sure, because Joe's a professional, what he does, I think Joe can comment about that and how we look at that. And when you do rezonings, for whatever reason, things change. You know, we may never see in the next 20 years any industrial anymore, okay? If that happens, cities will go back to change zonings to accommodate what is applicable at the time. And when that happens, you affect everybody in the neighborhood. So we look towards, okay, if we do something here, how am I affecting the guy here? And, you know, because we're trapped in a very, I would say, a higher density of what the township represents versus what I see more north of here, I think this is one of the last spots that can really accommodate, with good reason, what we're doing. Because of the existence of already a rezoning, even though you are not here, you did affect Mr. Sirkoff's property, the township, by allowing the rezoning of Deer Park.
I have something to add that Connie was speaking to. Dana, as the planning coordinator, you're required to provide, send out notification of the prior public hearing to any property that's within 300 feet of 156 gates, correct? That's the high-level notification requirement. And you gave me that list. That resulted in 59 letters that you sent out. Of those homes, the oldest that was built was 1847. And 1960 was the last year, 62 years ago, that construction occurred on any of those lots not meeting 100 feet of frontage and 20,000 square feet, R1B. And since then, the master plan, which you were actively involved in, Mike, what year did that major rewrite of the master plan take place?
The master plan was just recertified.
Okay, recertified, okay. So.
By this committee?
You know, to.
You were part of that.
Anyway, I'm not going to make any other comments, but I mean, that's.
May I make a suggestion?
Go ahead, Mike.
I think arguing that the R1C, the R1B, that is mute at this point in time. The reason is, is that we're here to consider your proposal. And I think we're prepared with more data than we had at the board meeting to discuss with you, to ask you for some considerations that you might consider as additional conditions for the property, to make it work for you, make it work for Bruce Township citizens, and make it work for the Planning Commission and the board. So I think that's what we should focus on at this meeting, rather than argue the homes and the existing zoning. Okay? I think that would be more fruitful. If you think so.
We'll have more time to talk about that very issue as it comes up and is needed. But we're just going to invite anyone in the.
Sir Chair.
Audience, oops, yes.
Before we do that, I'd just like to put a little bit of information out so everybody has kind of a same baseline. I just want to be clear that the requested rezoning is R1B to RM1, just so everybody knows what's being asked for. And there are conditions on the rezoning. And I think, I'd just like to read the conditions, because they modified their conditions from the last time. So I'd just like to read the conditions so that everybody knows what conditions they're offering, so that, I think that can help guide the conversation a little bit. So there are eight conditions.
Do we have that in writing in front of us somewhere?
They were provided in writing, but I'll read them out.
Well, I'd like to have them in front of me if you get to it.
I believe they were sent the day after the packet.
Some memorandum?
Oh, correct.
Or no?
No, no, this is a letter from the applicant.
They've got two letters.
It's attached to the, is that, you're talking about the previous meeting?
The revised conditional zoning conditions.
Talking points? Is that what it says at the top?
Yeah, talking points.
Okay, it was on the back of the memorandum. When you flip this, that's the.
Are you picking up any? My, I'm not really hearing any amplification on this.
We're trying to locate the document that.
Some other ones? Talking points, that's it.
And where are the conditions?
No.
I don't know where the conditions are. Conditions are not in that document.
Okay, I thought that was it.
No. I'd just like to have it in writing in front of me before you read it.
Sure. When I go back to reading through them, I'll talk really loud.
Do you have one? Dana, can you shoot a copy of, do you have multiple copies, Dan?
No, I only have one, sorry.
Dana, could you please make a copy for, all the commissioners should have that in front of them.
While she's doing that, can you turn up the microphone levels a little bit?
Testing, can you hear me?
No, no.
They got, those, they need to be like at about 12:30.
I must kick something off every time we're here.
They are at 12:30.
Try it now.
Test, test, test.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, okay.
Okay. Everybody test their mic, so.
Yeah.
No, but one at a time, Joe?
Yep.
Okay.
Hello?
Yep.
Test, test, can you hear me?
Got to be close, can you hear me?
Test.
Good?
Okay.
Okay, let us know if you can hear us. We get weak or we get lazy, you know, sitting back like this.
How are you guys doing way in the back? Everything's good? Great job.
Okay.
Beta test. I just think everybody's got to have that in front of them.
That's fine.
He's back. Okay. Got it right here.
Too many papers.
I have a lot of papers.
I left some at home.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, should just be a single page, yep. Okay, so I, now that you've got it in front of you, I can read them. So the first condition is the site plan will consist of five ranch-style attached condominiums, each containing four units with attached garages. And those are shown on Exhibit A. Each building condominium will be bricked and built to the rendering, renderings attached here to this agreement labeled Exhibit B. Three is each unit will be a minimum of thirteen hundred square feet, have a minimum two bedrooms, and an attached two-car garage, a full basement, a front-covered porch, and a rear concrete patio. Number four, the road will be private or dedicated to the Macomb County Road Commission and built to the standard specs required by Macomb County Road Commission. Number five, the site plan is contingent on the approval of Bruce Township engineering, fire department requirements, which is something that really applies to every site plan. Number six, this rezoning approval does not guarantee the availability of an approval from Romeo's Department of Public Works for city water or sewer use agreements. Number seven, this rezoning request is inclusive of a lot split, keeping the existing residential home and property, as is R1B, but allows for any and all variances needed for approval of this proposed site plan and its offered dimensions. And eight, this site at, plan as presented will include a grassy berm with assorted landscaping adjacent to the west side of the entry road to the condominiums, which will be a minimum forty-three feet, and contingent on the approval of the land split and associated variances needed for these conditions. So those are the eight conditions. Just wanted everybody to, to make sure everybody had heard them before we went to public discussion.
And Joe, just to clarify, which are different from what we had seen before? Six is definitely, is seven and eight also?
Yeah, so previously, let's see, so the, the size, a minimum of thirteen hundred square feet, that used to be a range of twelve hundred to thirteen hundred. The first two are the same. Let's see, four is, originally, they were talking about dedicating a road, that really, this type of development can be done with a drive, so they've, they've eliminated that. And let's see. Yeah, there've been a couple other modifications. They took out a traffic count one, because they had provided a traffic study. They did have the land split and variances in there before. So it's fairly similar, but there were a few modifications, a couple of different conditions.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to go to the audience. Anybody who wants to speak on this issue, other than the petitioner, Anne Marie?
Yeah, I had it. Anne Marie Boyes, 701-70 Whitetail Lane, speaking on behalf of the twenty Deer Park homeowners.
Well, right close to you, Anne Marie.
Thank you.
Anne Marie, you're going to be the, the primary or the lone?
The lone. I think there's ten of the twenty here.
Okay.
Okay?
So with that, we typically allow a few extra minutes, so...
Thank you.
Can go five instead of three, please?
I, I should be about four.
Okay.
I practiced. And it's not the same as what I've said in the past, and I think a lot of what I'm going to say is perhaps of relevance to the other neighboring property owners, not all, but some of it. You've received our written statement with our concerns about development at 156 West Gates. We look to the township to address several inconsistencies and issues we set forth. Beyond that, we have just a few things to point out this evening. We remain in principle opposed to rezoning to RM1 because of the glaring inconsistency with the master plan and future land use map, and because it sets a dangerous precedent for the township. However, we are also realistic about a much worse alternative for us in Deer Park, such as an overbuilt, crammed-in, single-family housing development, or, worse yet, a crammed-in, stacked-up condo development, similar to what is seen nearby in Romeo. Both of Mr. Sirakov's two condo site plans, which he presented for today and which we have a copy of, are significantly denser than Deer Park. If the existing house remains, it will generate even more traffic than just the proposed condos alone. We believe that a condo development that is denser than Deer Park, which is twenty units, five buildings, spread across a total of our, just short of six acres, five-point-nine-one-something, I think, is simply wrong. As long as a condo development at 156 doesn't exceed the density of Deer Park, we have a few additional considerations, or conditions, if you will, that would help mitigate our concerns, and these are Deer Park's concerns. First off, we would like Mr. Sirakov to agree that any required, required de-watering activities on his property be completed consistent with Eagle's best management practices or under its direct guidance. Despite Mr. Torres' repeated suggestions that the neighbors are clueless, the Eagle documentation that I submitted, as well as my direct conversation with our Eagle District Engineer, indicate that de-watering can absolutely affect the operation of nearby wells. Exactly this happened to nearby homes in nineteen ninety-six, when Fiddler's Cove property up on Van Dyke was de-watered. And frankly, I'd have to question why a developer would not agree to adhere to Eagle's best practices or oversight. Secondly, even with the best-laid plans and precautions, we all know that bad stuff can happen. In the case of Deer Park, the bad stuff could be extreme. We provide water to twenty separate homes. We are also a public water supply regulated by Eagle, just the same as the Village of Romeo, and we're subject to violations and notices and fines. We are essentially the same as a municipality with provisioning of water, but a municipality has protections against damage to its infrastructure by ordinance. Deer Park has no such protections. The current cost to replace our two wells is just short of forty-two thousand dollars, based on our April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two estimate. That's current pricing. I don't know what the cost would be for other well-related repairs or replacements, mitigation factors, or the amount of any fines. We would like Mr. Sirakov to agree that he will obtain a bond or financial equivalent in Deer Park's favor to cover us in case our supply of safe water is negatively impacted. I've provided particulars on that to the township. I'm sure the township could also request a similar bond for property owners other than Deer Park. If there's no issues, Mr. Sirakov's money outlay will be returned. If there are issues, all, including Mr. Sirakov, are protected from protracted litigation and attorney fees. Last item, the requested rezoning to RM1 is the same as Deer Park. If I'm not mistaken, your current ordinances do not require any greenbelt fencing or landscape berms between abutting RM1 properties. We would like Mr. Sirakov to agree to the creation of a smaller-scale landscape berm on his side of the entire shared property line with Deer Park, which will be planted with offset four-to-five-foot-tall spruce trees spaced four-to-five feet apart. This berm should not intrude upon any otherwise buildable area, and I don't believe it would impact any required setbacks that he's going to have to meet. A berm would also provide privacy and aesthetic value equally to Deer Park and his condos to be built. We remain open-minded that our concerns may be addressed, and thanks again for giving me the extra time. Thanks.
Hey, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Don Stone. I live at 170 West Gates, right next door to 156. To build on something that Anne Marie just said, I talked to a representative from Eagle, and he said to me that he was familiar with the area, and also that the developer would really be making a big mistake not going and finding out what is back there, the water that we see bubbling out of the ground, the wetness that I've seen today, it's all wet, and it stays wet, and that they would be really making a big mistake by not doing that first. The other thing I want to address is, you already know that we've been here talking about the traffic and the danger of people backing out of their driveways. I'm not affected by that too much. I'm affected more by turning into my driveway than getting out of it, because I can turn around. But I watch small children getting cars with their backpacks, and their mothers or their fathers backing out of their, their driveways, and almost getting hit. The other day, when I went to Sheena's, I seen three people run the traffic light. They ran the light. It even says, "No turn on red," they run it. So there still is really a traffic problem. I called the road commission, and they did an aerial view of the area and told me that, yes, they would need to do a traffic study on both ends, not just one end, and probably for at least a five-to-seven-day activity. Now, they couldn't do that when I called them because of snowplows. Of course, the snowplows would rip those things out. So I would also like to see a traffic study. Also, and when I heard them say here, too, I didn't hear anything about the retention pond. Now, I'm guessing that there still is a retention pond. Is that correct? There'll still be a retention pond. But we're still worried about the flooding. One of the residents on Kading sent me a picture of his backyard and his basement that has flooded, because they always have flooding, and it all comes from above the hill. We're not lying about that. We see it. We've, I've lived here forty-six years. I've seen it every year. Now, I don't get the flooding, because I'm up on, you know, I'm on Gates, but the people behind me do, and the people in Deer Park do. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Jerry McCotter. I live at 11860 Kading. My property is on the north side of the property in question. I don't see where, he's saying that our houses don't meet zoning, so what? Look how long they've been there. My house has been there since nineteen fifty-three. My next-door neighbors were there when I moved in. Houses across the road are over a hundred years old now, so I don't see how that could have any effect on any zoning that you may come up with for his property. I understand he's trying to get it changed. He's got money invested, and that's how he makes a living. Well, I get it. But my concern is, just like Anne Marie said about the flooding, we do get water in the back of the property. So I don't know how, building something that's going to take up more land, so there's less land to soak up the water, clear all the brush and trees, and there's a lot of stuff in there, and that soaks up water, they'll all be gone. So the water has to go somewhere. It pops up out of the ground. As Don has attested, my neighbors have gone back there and seen it coming a foot high right up out of the ground, as if it were an artesian well. It is a type of an artesian aquifer in there. The back of my property, there's a lot of times I don't even have to mow it. It's so wet, it doesn't grow, and it's in the shade. So it's just, as far as the zoning, that our houses aren't, don't meet zoning, I don't know what it is. My yard's a hundred and thirty feet wide, so it meets the zoning. That's it. Thanks.
Sir?
Doug Peoples, 11820 Kading. I just had a question on the senior development. What enforcement is there to make sure that's seniors? Because every day I drive by a lot of the other condo things, picking up students, and very few of those are senior development. Most of them are new families. In fact, we had to add an extra bus route because of the added condos. So what is the guarantee that that's senior? It's going to be families, unless there's some sort of ordinance or whatever that covers that. So I don't understand the senior part of it. And are asking, are they asking to change our current zoning? Although I think that was cleared up, that that's not going to change yet. And there is a DTE right-of-way back in there. It runs the middle of our yard, but there's an older one that runs literally right along our property lines, and I don't know if he's considered that in his plan, study of available land. And, and I'm the one that gets the water off his property.
And my neighbor was the one that has the flooding.
Yeah? Anyone else?
Michael Kerner, 156 West Gates, directly across the street from the, or 157 West Gates, directly across the street. I just wanted to second what Don said about a, a new traffic study. I think it needs to be done. The amount of traffic we see in front of our houses is, it's, it's going to considerably go up with any kind of development. So that's really all I had to say. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay. With that, we'll come back to the commission.
I have a quick question. At the last PC meeting and at the board meeting, you had made a statement about fifty-five and over community, yet I see nothing on the conditions here to ensure that. Can you please speak to that, please?
So what we can do is, within the law, we can put in our, in our documentation, or what we, what we submit to the county as a senior-plus living. I know some, I know some people have challenged it, because they say it's discretionary, and we can't, we can't be against any type of race, age, group, so we got to be careful. So I think the way we go with trying to get that enforced is by doing the two bedrooms. Most seniors will go into a two-bedroom unit. But we can, if we can put something into the, into our recorded documents or bylaws, that's fine, but I think that's going to be challenged, because it's unlawful, under the Housing Act, you know, Fair Housing Act. But, you know, you designed the product small. You designed it with just two, two rooms, and as attached condos, it's typically the product that, that tracks fifty-five plus, typically it's even more than that, it's usually seventy-plus. You know, families need more bedrooms, more room, and they buy single-family.
It would be advertised as such as well? You know, for the advertisement, for the sale?
You, you, you just got to be careful, I'm telling you.
Joe, is that something you can speak to? Do you have knowledge of that?
I'm looking it up.
Yeah, the only thing that really allows us to restrict by age is like, under the HFA laws of Michigan, you know, the minimum age is sixty-two to go in, but it's because of the safety of the senior that is, you know, has memory care issues, they protect them. So if we do allow someone to come in that's younger, we have to get a special waiver from the state.
Yet I think I've seen signs in front of developments that say...
Fair Housing Act, yeah.
No, senior living. I've seen even fifty-five and over.
Yeah. But these are licensed, those are licensed, licensed facilities, yeah.
And, and had a hand up.
I mean, I could address some of these other comments, if you'd like me to. I can try.
Okay. Let's tackle one at a time.
One question from over here while Jay's looking.
The issue that Joe was looking up at. I met at length with our attorney, and what Mr. Torres is saying is not exactly correct. There are absolute ways, under federal regulations, that you can structure a senior-living community that are not discriminatory. They're very particular, as you're pointing out. They are very. You don't say, "Nobody under fifty-five can live here." You don't say that. However, you do have limitations... can live here." You don't say that. However, you do have limitations on the percentage of your occupants that have to be over 55. There are also limitations on ages for those under. There are limitations about the association that eventually adopts this. They, in fact, do have a legal obligation to monitor and make sure that those percentages are kept enforced. It also has to be advertised, as you're pointing out, Mr. Cooper, you know, senior living with a federal regs under. That means they've established themselves properly that way. There are two ways that those are enforced, which I think Doug's question was. Number one, it is hard-coded into the master deed with all those limitations that he'll have to file with the county. Number two is, is that as the properties are sold, there are deed restrictions on the properties, so that subsequent owners, as they're sold, just can't change it. But to say that it's going to, it could be challenged, but this is well-established. There is a way to do it.
Yeah. I don't, I think it's dangerous for anyone here to play attorney, because the law's the law. We want to, we want to promote a senior product. We think that's the senior, that's what's going to buy anyways. So I think maybe the comment is that someone on the township or the township attorney can give you some documentation to that effect. We're open to adopting what's lawful, but we just got to be careful that, you know, we don't break the, we don't go against the Fair Housing Act. Senior living, I operate senior living. I do this for a living as well. I have two big centers, 140 people, 135 people, and I know the laws, because I'm up at Congress fighting certain things that protect the seniors. And the only thing that we can do today, as a matter of fact, if you go by any new construction, you'll always see at the bottom of those signs that they follow the Michigan, the federal Fair Housing Act, which means you cannot be discriminatory towards age, gender, or race. So have the attorney answer, because her comments, if she's not an attorney, we've got to be careful that we don't guess.
Joe, any luck yet?
Well, I mean, I don't think I'm going to get you a definitive answer, you know, in an evening. I mean, I, certainly what I'm hearing rings true with my own experience, that, yes, there are ways to establish communities as 55-plus communities, but they're not necessarily always going to be exclusively 55-plus. There are, you know, bylaws and deed restrictions and things that you can place in there that would, that would give you a kind of enforcement mechanism. And that's what he's referring to. But, yeah, I mean, ultimately, you need a, an opinion from your attorney as to what actually can be imposed.
Can I ask you to silence the phone, please? Let me ask you this. Would you guys be willing to add a condition in here, that you guys would make this development a 55-and-over community to the extent that the law allows?
Absolutely.
And I'd ask, why isn't it in here now? Why wasn't it presented today? Because we've talked about it and talked about it.
I believe we actually did present that from day one.
It's never been in writing.
Or was brought up. We said yes. Somewhere along the way, we did say yes.
You said yes several times. That's why I was surprised I didn't see it here. So I guess the answer, the answer is yes, you would add.
Yes. Yes. As long as, again, the law permits. Yeah, no problem.
I think that's an appropriate segue as to, into what I'd like to read here. And Jared, if we can turn off as many of the front rows' lights as we can, people are going to be sitting. We don't need to worry about people tripping. And see if we can get the projector to, to show on the screen. Turn them all off if you, if you can. Okay, my lead-in here. Mr. Sirikoff, if my records are correct, your 156 Gates rezoning request goes all the way back to April of 2018. And this is the eighth time you're being allowed before the Planning Commission and/or Board of Trustees. Please understand that many resources continue to be expended trying to accommodate your ongoing request. In order to potentially make your request more acceptable by the Planning Commission, I have multiple "are you willing to consider" questions, each requiring a yes or no answer. Please note, dependent on your responses, each item will require substantiating follow-up documentation provided in advance to the Bruce Township Attorney for approval. Such approved documentation regarding each consideration must be received by the Bruce Township Planning Administrator, which is our supervisor, Mike Philbrook, not less than 30 days prior to being scheduled into and heard at any subsequent Planning Commission meeting. Please note, some of the questions that follow are from your list and are included solely to result in one master list. So the first question... I'm sorry?
Is he going to be responding to some?
Yeah, Tom, if you can come to the microphone, please.
I don't know if I'll be able to respond to them as they're sent to me, but I'll try my best.
Do the, do the best you can. Okay, again, these first ones, probably the first half dozen are from your, from your list. You know, I initially requested a yes or no answer, you know, trying to, you know, we don't want to get into a big debate here.
Sure. Simple.
The board's receptive to some brief comments, but bottom line, if you're willing to consider this stuff, this is a starting point for the subsequent dialogue to occur between your attorney and the township's attorney, trying to pin this stuff down to hopefully come up with a win-win situation. Okay?
Sounds fair.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
Go ahead.
Attorney to attorney assumes some type of approval.
Yes.
So I wouldn't jump to any conclusions yet.
Okay. Good point. So you know, I'm going to rely on you or any of the other commissioners because, to interrupt me if they disagree, okay? So first one, are you willing to consider site plan approval remaining contingent upon construction of five, four-unit-each ranch-style condominiums?
Yes.
Okay. So Mike, if you can record, or Dana, question one, yes answer. Next question, are you willing to consider site plan approval remaining contingent upon each building being bricked?
I'm not sure about that. I'm not going to, I can't answer that one right now.
Okay.
I think you're referring to first-floor brick.
I'm sorry?
First-floor brick. It's, just saying the word "bricked" is too generalized. Typically, first-floor brick means to the E, to the E.
Sure, sure. Yep. Yes, understandably, because it was, I think your comment was per renderings provided, which, so it was the brick first floor, the gable ends were siding.
Yes.
So that further clarifies that statement, and I'm in agreement with your, your comment. Okay, three, are you willing to consider site plan approval remaining contingent upon construction of an entrance road designated either private or to the Macomb County Department of Roads, in either case built to MCDOR specifications?
Yes.
Okay. Item four, are you willing to consider site plan approval remaining contingent upon approval from the Bruce Township Fire Department?
Yes.
Okay, item five, are you willing to consider site plan approval remaining contingent upon construction of an eastern boundary, landscape berm adjacent to Deer Park, per Bruce Township Ordinance 161, Section 5.19, landscaping, greenbelt, berms, walls, and requirements? So specifically, what this is, is asking you to consider is a landscape berm that you're going to have spoils from the pond, that you've already stated that you're willing to agree. You're going to have spoils from your basement digs. It'd be a perfect place to take and put those spoils.
I think the answer to that question would have to be after we talk to the engineers, because one of the problems is that we have detention, and the spacing between detention and the offset doesn't give you a lot of room. And you're required to have a, a, no, we're required to have a trench between the two properties, because water has to remain on our property.
Sure.
So to do that and accommodate that and put a berm on top of it, I think you're not going to have enough room. You know, what, one thing that we are also doing to help potentially reduce the size of detention is, we are going to have someone go out there to drill the property, to test for soils and absorption of, of water, because under those conditions, the present, you can present those facts with engineering calculations to the township engineer for review. And if the absorption is high, you can request a reduction. So if there's more room between the pond, detention, and property to allow for that, then that can be considered. But we like to look at the ordinance per what you just read.
Sure.
And get back to you on that one.
At this point, I'm willing to consider looking at it further.
Consider looking at it, absolutely.
Okay. And, you know, it's, it's all per Bruce Township engineering consultant direction, and they know, they're the experts. I am not. You're, obviously, you've done this before. So, willing to consider that. Okay, item six, are you willing to consider site plan approval remaining contingent upon construction of an intra-development detention slash retention pond with a dedicated direct discharge into the local stormwater sewer system, and without discharging or crossing into any adjacent properties?
Okay, so that question, again, has to be addressed by the township engineer, only because, you know, water flows. And depending on the topography of the property, we don't know if we can even get to the municipal, if there's one provided at the street that's deep enough to allow for that distance. So typically, we let the engineers design it and let the township review that. But the comment that not to an adjacent property, the outlet that's provided there by law has to be provided when you cut off the normal flow of water flow. So when Deer Park went in, and the same thing's going to happen with us, we've got to provide, if the water flows from west to east, we have to provide the same thing as an outlet to connect to us. Now, the way they control, so we don't have any problems, is they put restrictions. So the pipe will have, have to have a restriction to only allow a minimum amount of water to flow out of our detention. But that's all engineered and approved by the township, but that's, that's the basis of every development we do.
But the question, Mr. Torres, is are you willing to consider the high, high-level...
Yeah, I would just add to that with the approval of the township engineer.
Okay.
At site plan.
Okay. Township engineer, I can't edit this here. I'm just going to put, Jared, will you do this for me? Item six, add per approval, per engineering approval, item six. Okay. Item seven, are you willing to consider approval of this rezoning request remaining contingent upon all building downspouts, sump discharges, and storm drain discharges to run underground into the 156 Gates intra-development pond, and similarly, all grades? I think you kind of just spoke to the grades. It's going to be per engineering approval, being sloped to direct surface water into the pond, is to further reduce runoff onto adjacent property.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that would be, you'd want per engineering approval on that also.
Correct. Well, engineer's going to make a...
Yeah, he's, he's going to review all this stuff.
Absolutely.
Okay, so it's kind of implied commissioners have no problem with that, the implication of engineering direction?
No.
You have no issues with it, correct?
No issue.
Okay, all right. Okay, so those were the easy ones. Okay, are you willing to consider site plan approval remaining contingent upon conducting any required dewatering activities on your property, consistent with the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, from this point forward, will be referred to as Eagle? Their best management practices are under Eagle direct guidance to help prevent negative effects, it should be prevent or reduce negative effects on adjacent wells and surface waters.
So my comment with that is that Eagle works together when you, when you pull your permits for, it used to be DEQ, for water and sewer. And guys that install, the only time they do water is if they have to, because when they're, when they're digging a trench to put a water line or sewer line, water will collapse the hole and make it, you know, dangerous. So this is something that we don't control. OSHA controls that. But I think the guidelines for Eagle are what most of these companies have to follow, because they're bonded, these companies. And they, you know, this is standard practice, I want to say. So I have no problem following Eagle's best practices, because I believe they're tied into the permitting process as well, and approved by the engineer as well.
Okay, so A is a yes.
Yes.
Okay. I believe we're all, we're yeses on every question thus far. Are you willing to consider of approval of this? In fact, before I get to this question, Mike, do you have anything to add about the current state of our, our...
You go ahead, and then I'll...
Sewage capacity?
You go ahead.
Okay. So before you comment, Mr. Torres and Mr. Sirikoff, I'm going to ask fellow Commissioner Tremblay to take it in and provide additional commentary. But I'll read the statement here. Are you willing to consider approval of this rezoning request remaining contingent upon Bruce Township being able to obtain sewer and water taps from the Village of Romeo to be committed within six months from the date of request, and not as a condition of annexation? And if this doesn't happen, are you willing to consider construction of a septic system approved by the Macomb County Department of Health and/or a community well system that will be a public water supply regulated by Eagle?
Can you repeat that first sentence with regards to annexation?
Okay. Are you willing to consider of approval of this rezoning request remaining contingent upon Bruce Township, it's Bruce Township being able, it's not the Village of Romeo providing. It's Bruce Township being able to obtain sewer and water taps from the Village of Romeo to be consent, to be committed within six months from the date of your request, and not as a condition of annexation? Those are the big words.
Before the applicant answers, I would like to take this and break it into two questions, if you don't mind.
Sure, go. Perfect.
The first question would be, would you be willing to add as a condition that if Bruce Township is unable to obtain additional sewer capacity from the Village of Romeo, that you would put in septic?
If we can, well, obviously, if Romeo's not going to allow it, either we can...
No, 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 no. I'm saying if Romeo will not provide Bruce Township additional sewer capacity, it's a very specific question.
Yeah. So if they don't provide it, then either I'll, two alternatives that Tom has is either to wait for capacity increase, or to put in septic.
So you're agreeing?
Yes.
Okay. So the second question then becomes, in the event that the only way Romeo would provide you water is to annex that property from Bruce Township, are you willing to put in a community well, in lieu of Romeo holding?
I don't know what that's going to, what that's going to consider, to put a community well. So I, I have to say, at this point, we have to wait to talk to our engineer.
I would suggest you do that, because that's very important to the township, until we, until we can...
I did talk, but I did talk to the township engineer with regards to annexation, and he says, it's a one-in-a-million chance that they'd want to for something like this. It's not big enough to want it.
Well, I, I would take a different opinion. They've annexed a couple of properties from our neighboring communities. We've been discussing sewer capacity for a year, and we still don't have a contract for additional capacity. So we have a little different concerns than you might be hearing from other people. So I would say, take that condition very seriously.
Okay, so we'll have to look into that when we get back to it.
So it's, it's two issues. One is sewer capacity, Romeo granting it to us. If they don't, you're willing to put in septic, or, or wait, or with respect to water provided to Romeo, that you agree to put in a community well, based on your discussion with your engineer. That's, that's the clarity required for this one.
So the community well would handle, I guess, the water side of it. You're talking about sanitary sewer. It was two different. So how do you handle one without the other?
Septic.
So septic system and a community well?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, let me, let me ask.
Now, if we, if we get a sewer contract expansion with the Village of Romeo, that eliminates the, the septic versus sewer issue. But it's been, it's been a year, and we just got language this week. So we're, we're concerned that it's, it might be longer than, than you guys need.
So, so I think that, you know, again, you can repeat the one sentence that, that mentions six months. Would Mr. Sirikoff have the ability to wait until a new contract could be reached that would protect, you know, the township?
Well, we don't know if a new contract will be reached.
No, I'm going to say if he wants to wait a couple of years to, for that, he should be...
Certainly, certainly. But we would want a condition placed on, if we were to approve a rezoning... a rezoning request, a condition of rezoning request, we would want some conditions so that, as I've described here today.
Okay.
I mean, that's what our desire is. It's certainly up to you to propose conditions any way you want. I'm just trying to express some that might be more meaningful to the township.
I think what Mr. Torres was asking specifically if the, we needed to retain that to be committed within six months from the date of request.
Yeah, not to put a time limit on it.
I'm not, you're not suggesting putting a time limit on it?
No, my text, it suggested the time limit.
No, I'm not suggesting a time limit. I'm just looking for a potential.
Dana, I'm going to give you this in the form of a word document. So Mike's comments that he just made, please pull them from the recording and also striking out the sixth month, right? Okay, are we good to go to carry on?
I mean, is that the?
Yeah, so we'll, let me investigate what you just asked and get back to you on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, next one. Okay, as a benchmark, the Deer Park condo development is 5.9 acres divided by 20 units. Results in a simple allocation of 1,285, excuse me, 12,850 square feet per unit. Per your existing site plans and surveys already submitted, 156 gates with the existing house remaining is a total of 4.62 acres divided by 20 units. Results in an allocation of only 10,062 square feet per unit, which is 2,788 square feet or 28% less as compared to Deer Park. Therefore, with the existing house remaining, the proposed development would be denser than Deer Park based on the available acreage comparison. Continuing, that the most recent 156 gates proposal with the existing house remaining is a total of still 4.62 acres and you're requesting 24 units, which results in an allocation of only 8,385 square feet per unit, which is 2,940 square feet or 35% less than Deer Park. Therefore, the existing remaining, or the house remaining, the proposed development would be denser than Deer Park based on the available acreage comparison. Alternatively, 156 gates with the house removed, it's a total of 5.2 acres divided by 20 units. Results in an allocation of 11,326 square feet per unit, which is still 1,525 square feet or 13% less than Deer Park. Following this consideration, removal of the house results in a 15% density improvement with a 20-unit buildout, but it's still denser than Deer Park. My question is, are you willing to consider approval of this rezoning request remaining contingent upon removal of the existing house with the development remaining at five buildings, four units each, to be built on your total available 5.2 acres?
No.
Okay. Okay, 11, regarding your prior comments that you want to build condominiums just like Deer Park. At Deer Park, 1,478 is the average center unit square footage and 1,578 is the average end unit square footage. As a result, are you willing to consider or approval of this rezoning request remaining contingent upon each unit being constructed between 1,400 and 1,550 square feet with an attached two-car garage, a full basement, a front covered porch, and a rear concrete patio?
Our comment would be, number one, having the smaller unit would be more, more intrusive to a 55-plus user or older user, number one. Number two, the design of the units themselves today with the two-car garage in the site plan supports itself with that size. If we change that, the site plan may change. So we'd have to probably redevelop the site plan. We can look at raising the size of each unit to see how it works with the garage offset, but we'd have to come back with a different site plan.
Okay, all right, so your answer is willing to consider?
We'll take a look at that.
Okay, all right.
Rick, can I, can I propose this in a little different manner?
Go ahead, Mike.
It might be, could you put the one back up?
Sure can. There we go.
I think what you were proposing was 1,300 square feet, correct?
It was approximate, yes.
Rick, I didn't want to put words in your mouth, but I think if we went 1,300 to 1,550, not to exceed 1,550.
I'm concerned based on the benchmark to Deer Park, Mike, and I think Anne Marie can speak that the, correct me if I'm wrong, Anne Marie, the majority of residents in Deer Park are already seniors, is that correct?
I think we have people in their 70s and 80s in about 15 of the units. Two or three of the units have people who are in their late 60s. I think we have one unit where the individual is just turning 60. So it's exclusively senior, almost always has been. I mean, there have been kids in the past.
Do you have any regulations in your association rules that says it has to be 55-plus right now?
No, we don't.
Okay. But everyone is though? Everyone that lives there now is over 55?
And we have, we have considered doing exactly that as a protection for Deer Park. At any point, an answer to your question, yes, it's all well into their seniors. And yes, they all were seniors when they bought and their intent was and their desire was is to have a bigger home instead of something that's smaller by 200 or 300 square feet and all stacked up.
Yeah, there, another factor driving this is that, not going to name the development and it's, it's in the village, but my daughter owned a condo that was in the neighborhood of the 1,300 square foot size, you know, full basement, but, and they were fourplexes and it was more resembling apartment-like living and it was nothing like Deer Park. So we're, you know, I've driven the area, I've looked at the, you know, the surrounding properties, you know, Deer Park is a nice development. And furthermore, you know, you look at west side of Kading Street, yeah, what, excuse me, south side of Kading Street at the west end, I think we got three houses that are, they're all built to R1B standards over there. They're beautiful, beautiful investments by the homeowners. And so, you know, personally, if I lived in the area, I would want to have something that is on par benchmark and versus something that is, you know, 10% low, let's say, as compared to Deer Park from a condo perspective and also understanding that those houses that I just mentioned, they're within the notification district. So trying to.
We could probably accommodate a larger size. We might need a variance to a setback to allow for that, but we'd like to go a little bigger. I think it's to our advantage.
And it could, it could, you know, make this sale of your units. You could.
Well, the architect look at it with the engineer.
Demand a higher.
Is that due to the density concern?
If needed, yeah.
Wasn't that in, I mean, doesn't that make the density concern worse?
Well, by, by an amount, yes, Jared. And I believe that Mr. Torres and Mr. Sirikoff already responded to not being receptive. If I recall incorrectly, you're not receptive already to limiting it to five buildings, four units each. So if you remain with your request with the, let's say, with the, using the full five, two acres with the building removed, you're currently requesting 24 units, correct?
Currently requesting 20 units.
That, well, that, this, I'm talking with the existing building removed. Last site plan I thought was for 24 buildings with the.
Yeah, it is an offset only because the home, he's been offered like 250,000 for the home. Obviously, it's subpart of the values around, but because they're going to have to fix it up and, you know, add money to the home. If he was to knock the home down, typically a pad only is going to generate about $25,000 vacant per pad. So if you add four of those, it's 100. So it's really to his negative to knock the home down. And leaving the home in place and having someone, you know, remodel the home would keep the consistency along gates on both sides of the road. So we didn't see it as a, as a harm. If it was the only house left, yeah, probably makes sense just to knock it down.
I can put up a GIS overview here and I mean, again, to just a very obvious overhead look, 20 units, you know, your acreage is similar to Deer Park. I mean, five, five buildings, four units is, is something that is on par. That 24 units, yeah, on the five acres with the house removed, it's, it's just much greater density. So.
What's written in this document?
But I think it's within the RM1, you know, restrictions.
It's well under.
Well under what is allowed, isn't it?
Seven to eight units under.
Well, but, you know, you're coming in with a rezoning request, two zoning jumps. I mean, if it were already zoned RM1, you could come in and just build RM1 requirements, but it's not. You're asking for a rezoning request and we're trying to come up with something that works for you as a developer and also protects the people that have already made an investment in the community. And, I mean, to me, that's the high level win-win.
We're trying to do the same. Much more expensive today to put, for the time Deer Park went in, it's probably 50 bucks a foot to put the streets in. We're at probably 1,200 dollars a foot now for water and sewer. So we gotta make it, we gotta make it affordable as well, otherwise the project fails. I don't think anyone wants to see a project fail.
Well, I hear what you're saying. I know cost of construction is not cheap, but it, you know, what is allowed should not be on the backs of the people that have already made the investment in the community.
Well, Deer Park could have added two more buildings there. If you look at their rezoning, they have more, lots available to build in there. Whether they decide to do that or not was up to them, but they were approved for more. If you look at the zoning, if you look at their approval, they're approved for, I think, 30 units. So we're not trying to get anything different. We're actually below the approval that was already blessed for that property. So there's a lot of different arguments. We can go back and forth. What we're trying to be is receptive to.
What you're saying is wrong.
No, I'm not saying it wrong because I have the documents.
Okay, then what if you read the master deed, not just the site plan, you would understand that there was a maximum of six buildings in an acreage that's a, to short of an acre larger than you. That sixth building was only going to be at the developer's discretion if there was sitting water provided. It was not provided. A well was built. Because of the Eagle restrictions on the amount of isolation zone around a well had area, there couldn't be anything built there.
Right, you lost acreage because you had to put in a well. Otherwise, there would have been probably two or four more units there.
The acreage we lost under your plot is because, was already bigger than you. And what the point that I said, and I believe what Mr. Hegelstein is suggesting there is that what was, was, you said you wanted to build something just like Deer Park and what I believe is uniform here, whether you're talking about Deer Park or the people and the houses, they want your density to not be any worse than Deer Park. That's it.
Yeah, in 2018, we were taking down the house. Everyone wanted to keep the house. So we made a plan to keep the house. Now we want to remove it again, but it's just financially, it just digs a hole so far into the ground that it's, it would start to not make sense. But we want to be applicable, 80 or 90% of these questions that Rick has gave to us tonight, we pretty much said yes on just about all of them. This is just one we got to work on.
We're not done yet.
Rick, why don't you continue and folks try to talk to the planning commission. It's not going back and forth. We'll be here all night.
Okay, I just wanted to pull this up. Let me make sure I got the right area here. Gates, 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 come on, where are we?
How many more do you have?
About three.
You've got to go west.
Bear with me.
Other way.
Other way?
West.
Okay, here we are, the curve. Okay, so you can see, this is GIS map overhead. This is, this is Deer Park, five buildings. Okay, so your parcel is right here. You're looking to take, let me see here, come on, get out of here.
Hit the X.
Yeah, yeah, here's the existing buildings right here. So with the existing building remaining, you're looking to put basically some buildings that are slightly smaller, five buildings, in this square of property right here. It's, it doesn't meet the benchmark. It's clearly higher density, it's crammed in. So anyway, if you're willing to take and consider to take and look at it further at this point, that's what we're asking for.
We'll take a look at that.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, for the sake of time, okay, so, okay, just like Deer Park, okay, and you've already addressed you're willing to consider potentially larger minimum size for your buildings. Thank you very much. Okay, item 13, okay, and this kind of, we've already discussed this, basically in a nutshell, this is the 55 years of age or older pending legal approval in agreement to put in the master deed and the individual unit deeds. Are you willing to take and consider that?
Yes. Contingent about being lawful.
I'm sorry?
Contingent about, upon being lawful.
Yes. Okay, all right, continuing, okay, are you, item 13, are you willing to consider approval of this rezoning request remaining contingent upon all the condominiums being sold and not retained or transferred for lease or rental and that the appropriate, appropriate legal approved deed restrictions be agreed to by Bruce Township?
No.
Okay.
I can't, yeah, I can't do that. I think the problem with that one is that, you know, the market changes quite a bit and if the market is for selling, you sell them. During the 2008 and '09 recession, we've seen a lot of the product change over from rental to sales. And then when it went to sales, went back to rental because people couldn't qualify. So if people can't qualify or they can't get appraisal to qualify, he has to rent them to pay the bill. So it's, that's a tough one.
Okay.
But we can, we can, we can create our rental documents to say it has to be 55-plus, absolutely.
Okay, so would I interpret that you're willing to take and come up with some language for that question that could potentially be favorable for the township and for yourselves?
We can, we can add a statement that says if the conditions prevail to have a rental unit, then we would, we adhere to a 55-plus restriction as long as the law allows us to do that, yes.
Okay, I think what we're trying to prevent here is that this becoming.
You don't want kids and that extra traffic, I agree.
You know, basically, an apartment-like rental deal, I mean, we've already got some of that stuff going on around.
I totally agree with that, yeah.
These are going to be pretty nice and brand new, so hopefully you won't have to worry about it.
Okay, so willing to consider some changes that, again, would be potentially beneficial to you and the township, correct?
Yeah, the initial goal is to sell these condos, yes.
Okay, good, glad to hear it. Okay, item 14, this is, only got 15, only. Are you willing to consider approval of this rezoning request remaining contingent upon a bond or other binding and secured financial instrument being made available prior to the start of any development for activities and extending through the period ending one year after the issuance of the last occupancy permit for any of the units in order to reimburse any negative effects to safe water supply experienced by nearby properties?
Okay, the answer to that one is no. First of all, it's unlawful. Second of all, we follow the strict guidelines of the township ordinances. You're opening a huge can of worms because if any problems exist today that they want to try to tie to us, it'll just be endless battles in court to get our money back. And if they have current problems today, they're going to have current problems tomorrow. That's, and then, and then as a benchmark, everyone's, someone's going to have to go out there to study every single person's well, if they're good wells, bad wells. I think the township is asking for trouble with that type of requirement, which I've never heard of in my 25 years of development.
Well, whether, rather than relying on, you know, hearsay from a person requesting reimbursement from the bond, it would be their responsibility to provide objective evidence, ideally, obtaining, you know.
No, as a township, you can't, you cannot enforce that. That's against the law. No, you, as a township, you can't, you cannot enforce that. That's against the law. That's, that's constitutionally a, a, against my rights as a owner of property. I've never heard of such a thing. Have you ever done that to anyone in this township? Made it, made it adjacent development responsible for problems in the future? If they have well problems, it's not my problem.
Well, we do have a recent example that we're trying-
But you can't pick and choose the winners and losers here.
I'm sorry?
You cannot pick the winners and losers between two developers and say, well, you went first, you can't develop your property. That's unheard of.
Well, but we're trying to prevent recurrence of what happened. What was the development you mentioned up behind Sheena's?
Oh, yeah.
What was the name of that development, Anne Marie?
It, it's a corporate name that very well happened.
Well, maybe a better, excuse me for interrupting, the properties that lost well function in short time after because of the de-watering activities when Sheena's went in.
Yes.
So, and that developer recognized that they were responsible, and they stood up without having a bond, and they paid for replacement of the wells. Was there two or three of them over there?
Yes.
So, so we're required to follow township ordinances, engineering, engineering, county, engineering, and we have to follow the installation rules, there's OSHA requirements, safety requirements. There, there are so many requirements that we have to follow, that are, that are licensed by the county and, and the state.
Did you tell them in the, excuse me for interrupting, Mr. Torres, a gentleman here, he had a comment. Was yours property one of the properties that lost well function?
Mine was spitting air, but the well came back. But one of my neighbors on Kading and another one on Mellon both had to get new wells put in, and the developers-
Yeah, I, I think the question you need to ask is, when the wells were put in back then, if they're a hundred years old, whatever they were, is those, are those wells to the standards of develop- I'm just, I'm saying, there are, these homes were built long time ago. Were these wells built to the standards of Macomb County today?
I think we have the answer to the question.
He just, he said no.
All right, so you're not willing to consider, correct?
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's a nightmare waiting to happen.
Okay, um, all right, and fifteen's very similar. It's Deer Park Condominium Association, it's a type-one public water supply system, including two wells and an intra-development distribution system. The complete system is regulated by Eagle. Any negative impacts on its safe supply of water will subject them to violation notices and fines until such issues are eliminated. Are you willing to consider approval of this rezoning request remaining contingent upon second bond or other binding? So rather than be repeat, it's going down the same path.
Okay, so, so we don't install pipe, the contractor does, contractor's bonded, contractor's got to be approved by the county, maybe even the ordinance of the township. So you're asking the wrong group here, because we don't put pipe in the ground, we don't follow Eagle. We only, we only get Eagle permits, which is a permit from, for water and sewer, whether it's City of Water, City of Detroit. That's not something that, we don't shore up, show up the trenches, we don't de-water, these are all contracting companies. So I would tend to think that they have to follow these, because Eagle is a government entity that regulates them. It's not something that we do. We, we, we develop, we pay for permits, we pay the bill to get developed, but we do not follow what you have up there on that, on that writing. And you can verify that with your engineer.
Okay. All right, so we have the answers to the questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Wake up.
And if you'd like, I can, I can go back to the township engineer, I know him, he's worked with him for a long time, and ask him some of these questions. And send you responses.
Okay, well, rather than go through the questions once more, the big ones are five buildings, four units each, at, you know, at a amount greater than thirteen hundred square feet. And then the, it appears like you have some prior knowledge about the protections for the well function. Maybe just generically stated, if you'd be willing to take and consider exploring what options may be available to offer up to the planning commission as potential protections for the properties that are nearby.
I think the way you look at this is, let's say we just built exactly to our needs today, and they did the exact same development, same pipes in the ground, storm sewers, they'd be exactly the same because it's the length of the property. What is the condition then, if I build exactly what you guys want, exactly what the ordinance allows me to do? Their wells fail is because their wells are not appropriate, designed right, or to a history where regulations were required. When you develop any property, I've never heard of a developer neighboring property that has to secure or bond over existing performance of groundwater or septic system. It has nothing to do with me. I have to follow the rules within state law and development rules that the county enforces with me. How do I affect them, whether I do five homes in there or twenty units, is, is not going to change that.
Now, we do have a unique situation, especially with Deer Park. We have a regulated community well system in there. And, you know, it's, it's not a fly-by-night outfit. I mean, how often does Eagle come out and, and?
Eagle can show up at any point, and they do. We have mandated inspections every three years in the interim period. We are held responsible to have our wells tested and all the, that whatnot. We just had our entire wells, we have an infrastructure that other, a regular house wouldn't have. It's a wellhouse that's full of gauges, injection ports, meters. We have three massive water storage tanks. That was all just replaced. It's, it's brand new.
When, when you design a system, you don't design it to say, if there's a project going next door, it ain't going to work. That's not how it works. They design it to work, whether it's a development or not, because it's assumed a development will eventually go next door. So I'd be really, you know, happy to review those engineering notes, because I believe AEW is your engineer, and AEW was the engineer for their project. So all of that has to be looked at, signed off to. Never did it develop and approve a project based on check A, if you're going to have a development next door or not. It's not how it works. So if something's not working or failing, I think you need to go back to the, the design and contractor to find out what's happening. Because they design these things to work, whether development next door or not. Because the first thing they do is they drill. They drill a hundred feet down just to test the grounds to see what's there. And they design the system for those grounds. And it's Macomb County Health Department that regulates that drinking water. Eagle regulates storm water, any type of course of water, storm runoff, storm runoff, and, and may regulate their pond, or their major well, but drinking water is regulated by Macomb County.
You're, you're dealing with them directly, that's, so-
Eagle regulates-
Okay, ma'am, Anne Marie, up here, please. I don't want to get into this back and forth.
I think to clarify, I think to clarify this before we have a good answer, I think it's important to ask the engineer, of when a system is designed, what is the regulations for design, and what is the perception for an adjacent development? I think that will clarify a lot of the questions you're asking right now. Because to ask a developer next door to be responsible for a system that could be potentially failing by design, I, I think that's fair.
I understand both sides of the table, and, you know, unfortunately, it's something I'm not going to be able to resolve, so.
Good question.
Go ahead.
The specific issue with concerns about the well and the infrastructure has to do with the de-watering process. It's explicit in all the details that that is the most likely activity that's going to cause other wells to come out. You said you, that's not a you, you guys are just developers, all these other entities come in and do that. If the de-watering is occurring, and I understand it's not an absolute given that that would happen, if the de-watering is occurring, and exactly what happens in the case of what Fiddler's Cove happened, a half a mile away or a half a block away, people lost their well. It was a direct connection. My question to you is, is the contractor going to be responsible?
What I'd rather ask the question is, which is probably the more appropriate question, is talk to the engineering companies, these guys designed with a thought and process of developing contingent to the, contiguous to the properties. Let me ask that question for you.
You have an idea?
I have a different idea.
Why? Because watering is a process of safety, because if they don't de-water, say sand, it's just going to collapse.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to ask, just for a pause. The engineer for Bruce Township is going to have to take a look at this. We could go back and forth, and I think we need to move on. It is a concern. We are a recommending group. The board will also consider this, right, again? And there's time to, to have that discussion and dialogue, but I don't think we're going to get anywhere tonight because it's, tastes great, less filling, tastes great, less filling, back and forth. I'll take your call, Heineken.
Okay, um, are you completed?
I'm done. Thanks, everyone, for being patient with me.
Good questions.
Any other questions from the commission?
I've got a question for the developer. There was a more robust discussion today, a lot of new questions for you. New information was introduced to the planning commission from you, from the residents, from Anne Marie boys, some of the citizens. My suggestion, I'm going to ask your opinion of this, I think you need to take some of this back and digest it, right? We, I think we need to take something back regarding the, the argument that we're into with de-watering and wells and responsibility of a developer with a property next door for liability purposes. And I think Dana, you and Mike need to take that with the engineer, and maybe with some discussion with Mr. Torres. But my suggestion would be to take that, take Rick's list with the yes and nos, give it to the planning commission, give it to you, and then come back with a formalized list of conditions based on that discussion that we had today. I think that would be the best course of action, but I'm looking to you guys, you guys think that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that, because again, I want to make sure that a lot of statements that are made has the backing that it's right or wrong. We're all stating things that we're not sure if it's right and wrong, and I think it's hard to make a decision without the facts.
That, that was true with a couple of issues.
Yeah, exactly.
And, and I think you, you need to take a hard look at a couple of things, just, just from my own personal perspective. One is the density. And I know you guys are arguing that if I tear down the house, that's an expense to me, but if you want to look like Deer Park, twenty units looks like Deer Park. So think long and hard about that before you come back. The other thing is the sale and lease. I know you, you guys feel a little constricted on that, but I think that's another thing that's important for the community. Fifty-five and over for sure, whatever, to the extent of the law. And then the, the thing regarding the infrastructure needs to be sorted out. So if you guys are okay with that direction, table this, come back with, with additional conditions based on the robust dialogue we had here.
Yep.
Okay, so I make, I make a motion to table this to the next planning commission meeting with the list of questions and the answers distributed to the developer and to the planning commission, and for the planning and zoning administrator and coordinator to get with our engineer regarding some of the issues that we were talking about regarding potential liabilities of the developer with properties surrounding them. And then that we, the, the developer bring back new formal conditions in writing for this planning commission to consider, and that we have answers to those infrastructure questions.
Motion by Trumbly to table, and I'm not going to go into the long discussion, but I do have a question to Dana. Do you have adequate notes to where you can reconstruct what Mike said in the way of a formal-
Request.
If our beta test works, she'll have a tape to look at, too, right?
Yes.
I'm also recording.
Yes.
Just to be sure, yeah.
And I'll send you the word document as a starting point.
So the motion is by Trumbly, long motion, Dana will capture it.
I'll suck it.
Seconded by Connie Chapman. Dana, will you call the roll, please?
Ed Cupidz.
Yes.
Connie Chapman.
Yes.
White Trumbly.
Yes.
Mandy Barnett.
Yes.
Rick Hagelstein.
Yes.
Jared Vinson.
Yes.
Randy Camp.
Yes.
That's it, that's it. By fire, Randy.
That's everybody.
I suggest we take a couple minutes stand-up break and come back and finish.
Make it short.
A stretch break? Yeah. I think we can get through the rest of this stuff pretty quickly.
Hopefully.